I'm Ronald Steika, I'm a township trustee. I'm very familiar with the, what you go through here in Hazlet because I was on the Okemos Board for twenty-two years before changing hats, literally from a Okemos Board member to a township trustee. The township appointed me liaison to the school districts, which is, you know, primarily Hazlet and Okemos, but also includes a little bit of East Lansing and even a little bit less of Mason. And I've attended meetings at all the districts now with this one. Basically, we're hoping that we can come up with some ways to cooperate and collaborate and maybe save some money in the process by joining forces with the school districts here in the township. We have a little more ability to perhaps do things than you do as far as taxation and maybe down the road we'll all come up with some ideas where we can help each other out and serve the community better. So, I'm here, here tonight just to introduce myself and let you know that that's what we're doing and that I am the liaison. If you have any issues or anything else you want to bounce off of me as a township trustee, feel free to give me a call or whatever, I'm in the phone book. You can email me through the township, it's, you know, I'm available.
Great. That's great, Ron. I appreciate you coming out this evening. I had a recent memory, I can't remember, somebody from the township providing the service for us.
Oh, that's interesting because supposedly I'm replacing someone else, I won't say who.[94.17][94.17](laughter)
Well, we're pleased you're here, thank you.
Thank you. And obviously I have, you know, I have, school districts are, and education are at my heart, so I couldn't have spent so long as a board member without that being the case. And we're very proud in Meridian Township because we have three, if not four, of the best districts you'll find anywhere.
Well, you're a great person to have as our liaison to the township board. We appreciate your coming.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or any other public, comments from the public? That would be a surprise, considering that you're the only one out here right now. Superintendent, oh, I'm sorry, student representative report.
Hi, I'm Ari.
Yeah, it's Sam.
Yeah, sure. The Volchar, Volchar is near enough to mark anyone Friday, there's, uh, people here on the, uh, side. We'll be having this speaker, the only people, children, folks, so, uh, David, David wants to say thank you for those participating in, uh, sending Raleigh up to the next big event is our night, which I don't say much about it, but, uh, Murphy, all through the five questions are going to be asked, which will be our assignment offer, uh, from Murphy family one night, which will take, uh, place on Friday, Saturday. Murphy family one night is sponsored by the Murphy PTO. Money raised will be spent for kids' education, financial and experiences for the year. And then those four HMS, specifically the national wealth, involving the evaluation of content area strengths, if we just, uh, define by the league test. They will often find, uh, these, uh, correlation of their, um, health, uh, many schools, uh, while finding their school, uh, will be called for this year. At least well, AJMS teachers experience have been ready for A C T week, uh, which is March five, so, um, if you need more information, please check out, uh, the, uh, the blood register on the Facebook. And, uh, on the, uh, we're actually, uh, we're busy in China, uh, tomorrow, February twenty-sixth. Our friends in China will be visiting in our classroom, happy to watch our chat.
Great, thank you, Sam. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Frank. Uh, February thirteenth was our student count, uh, and our unhaunted numbers were down approximately five students from the fall, uh, with a spring count of two thousand seven hundred and twenty students. Primarily that's, uh, the loss of the secondary population of students. So, um, that's usually a pretty good number for us, generally speaking, at the second count, we'd have probably thirteen, fifteen, eighteen students, so this is good news for us over the fall here. And then again, a reminder that the Foundation for Hazlet's, Hazlet's Schools is looking for talent. We're gonna have our Got Taste, Got Talent fundraiser event on April the thirteenth, and if you're interested in participating, you can reach us, or you can find out more about this at the Hazlet Administration Building, the owner's website. And then finally, I've had a resignation from Stephanie Forawak, who was with us for twenty-five years at Raleigh Elementary. She had taken a leap of absence shortly after we got back to break in January, and her husband did a job in Kansas, and so she has determined that she is not going to be coming back with us in the fall, so she has decided, because she was with us before, and we'll show you.
Thank you, Superintendent Duda. We have two discussion items tonight, and both feature Mr. Cook as the, as the keynote speaker on these, covering the proposed budget amendments and the budget forecast for thirteen-fourteen.
Thank you, President Frank. We actually are gonna do two things tonight, the first of which is to talk a little about the two thousand twelve, thirteen proposed budget amendment. You should have received in your packet, it's the blue document that has all the detail with regard to the budget amendment for the current budget that we're in this year. And then, we're going to talk about forecasting for next year. The governor came out with his budget projections or his numbers a few weeks ago, and so we're gonna talk a little about potentially how that might affect Hazlet and our budget going into the budget season for two thousand thirteen and fourteen. First of all, you know, we're projecting at the end of this year that we're gonna be just shy of a half a million dollars in deficit for this year, and we'll talk about the reasons of that in just a minute, but really the two main reasons for that are, one is that, as you know, the board, when we settled our contracts, we decided to take a little out of fund balance to balance the contract, a little around two hundred thousand dollars. And then in addition to that, we had the bus purchase, where we bought some buses because we got some grant money, and so really those are the two major issues with regard to that money. That will not be recurring for next year, so when we start the budget process for next year, which we'll talk about in a minute, we're looking at roughly around a two hundred thousand dollar deficit to start for next year. So, we're ending at about one point seven million dollars in fund balance, that's about six point six percent. That's a little higher than the target when we originally, we said that we would try to stay above the one point six million when we, when we put those numbers together with regard to those contract settlements. I'll just go through a few of these revenue adjustments. The big two really are state aid and property taxes, these kind of work together, as you know, that property taxes go up, state aid goes down, but the bottom line is the majority of the differences, we had about seven to ten student increase over budget from last year, that was about sixty thousand dollars. That was mainly due to the addition of the Saint Thomas students that we had, that were teaching that Spanish class over there, County Detchen, uh, from the middle school is doing that. And in addition, we, a reduction of the amount of special ed kids that we had over at Volchar on the pre-primary program. We actually lose FTEs for that, but we also gain money from the state with our cost formula that, that we get dollars back from the state. We get about one-third of the dollars back from the state of our special ed costs, and when our special ed numbers go down, it actually helps that number. So that made up about a hundred thousand dollars of that difference. The other issue, the other numbers that I'll just focus on, Kids Connection, because of the reduction of Kids Connection program, because we went to all-day kindergarten, there was a reduction in the amount of revenue for there. There's some offsetting costs because of the reduced hours for some of the staff involved in that. The other piece here, I'll mention this EPA grant, as you'll see on the next slide, is that there's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in expense. When you net those two out, the revenue from the grant and the cost, it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase in total. And then we got some additional money from our special ed ISD allocation. Those are dollars that come through the county millage that are spread to each of the districts in the county according to a cost sharing formula that the county puts together. So, about two hundred thousand dollars in total revenue increases. On the expense side, as I mentioned before, this one-time payment to employees, that was about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and then the buses, about a hundred and sixty thousand, when you net that out with that forty thousand dollar grant, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We did have increased costs for full-day kindergarten, some additional dollars that we had to put for additional materials that we needed for to equip those classrooms, smart boards, computers, some of our consumables, our everyday type of reading and math programs for the additional amounts that we had to do for there. We had some additional changes for health insurance, that we had some savings, this is basically just when employees are changing from either full family to cash or back and forth, there was actually a positive adjustment on the expense side. Special ed parapros, we had some additional costs there, this is unfortunately something that we've been dealing with for the last several years, the increase of parapros because of special need kids in our district. We're actually gonna be looking at a potentially different model to deliver special ed services. We've met with our principals and Mike Kane a couple of times to look at some alternatives to potentially reducing especially that special ed parapro, uh, pro costs. We also had some reduction in the expense side of the ISD formula. We get revenue from that, but they also charge us tuition for various programs where our students go out of the district, either at Hartwood or some special ed, uh, self-contained rooms throughout the county, and so that was a reduction there. The seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars, that was kind of the budget, I don't wanna say plug, but that was the amount that when we originally were doing the budget, that we were trying to save in contract costs. When you look at the retirement reduction there, about three hundred thousand dollars, that's because the rate started up a couple, almost three points higher, then it actually went down, and then it went back up because of that whole retirement issue with regard to the window closing and employees having to make a change, the whole healthcare issue, and so that actually went down again, and so about a half percent increase blended from the beginning of the year, but there was some significant savings there. So about seven hundred thousand dollars in expense changes. As I mentioned, our fund balance is about one point seven million, that's about six point six percent. As you can see, that's, you know, a pretty big chunk from last year, but, you know, we knew that was coming because of those two things that I talked about earlier. You know, we're still not, we're still a little above where we were a few years ago. We've had this kind of succession upwards and now we're starting to go down, and I think, as we'll talk about in a few minutes, when we look at next year, you know, we're pretty much at the bottom as far as where we want to be at fund balance. I don't think we really want to go any lower, but, you know, I still think we have, you know, a relatively adequate amount of fund balance left at the end of this year, or projected, I should say. If you look at the end of last year, these are the numbers countywide, we were eight point six at the end of June thirtieth of last year. You know, we're still on the lower end of the countywide, but you can see that there are many districts that are consciously using fund balance to balance their budget. We have not done that a whole lot over the last few years, other than last year when we, when we settled with our employee groups. I don't know what the projection numbers are for twelve thirteen, I've heard a few numbers, but they're, these numbers are probably gonna continue to go down, you know, we saw ten point eight, now ten point five. That number probably will be low ten percent next year as more districts continue to use fund balance to, to solve their budget issues. So, that's where we are for fund balance. As I mentioned, the governor came out with his proposal just a few weeks ago, and I'll just talk about specifically the areas that affect our district and potentially what that might bring for us. Obviously, this is just a proposal at this point, nothing is law, we'll have to wait and see where the House and Senate weigh in on his proposal, but, um, the foundation allowance, there is a one-time increase to bring all districts up to seven thousand dollars. Unfortunately, we're pretty close to the seven thousand dollars to begin with, so we're looking at a whopping three dollar increase in foundation allowance, which amounts to a little over eight thousand dollars for our district. The good news, it's not going in the negative direction, but at least it's moving upwards, and it is a one-time adjustment, so this isn't guaranteed in the budget for next year. So, we potentially will use, lose that three dollars for next year depending upon what happens. The retirement rate increase, as I mentioned before, that rate's gone up and down and fluctuated around, but for next year, it's slated to go at, to, up to twenty-four point seven nine. That's from where it is right now, but as I mentioned, that rate went up and down and up, and so really when you look at this, we actually have about a half percent blended rate increase in our budget now, so even though the rate's going up, there really is no true increased cost for retirement cost because it's already built into the budget that we're having this year, so when we roll that over to next year, really it's about the same amount of retirement cost, assuming nothing changes. Now, something could change between now and then, as you all know, we still have that looming five hundred million dollars that's sitting out there with regard to that court case that's been in limbo since two thousand and ten, and so once that's either settled negatively or positively, that could potentially affect the rate for the future.
Did the government also not include another fight on retirement?
There were some additional dollars to help pre-fund, yes, the retirement, so that's, that's a good thing, there's been dollars to help that huge deficit that we have with regard to funding for retirement, so.
It'll affect our?
Well, it affects the amount of dollars available because they're using that money to, for the school aid budget, but it's not affecting the retirement rate other than that half percent increase. The retirement offset, this hundred and fifteen dollars roughly per student that we got last year, this is to help with that rate increase that's been significant over the last few years, and so it's the same, so the good news is we didn't lose any dollars, but we're not gaining any dollars. The best practices incentive went from fifty-two dollars to sixteen dollars, which is about a hundred thousand dollar decrease. We'll talk a little about the changes in some of the categories. They still have this seven of eight criteria that you have to meet, but some of those criteria have been changed just slightly as far as additional wording, additional criteria to meet that. They still have the academic performance incentive out there, a possible hundred dollars per student. As you recall, they were based on growth, that's the new buzzword with regard to additional dollars is growth, and unfortunately, our initial calculations is that we won't get any of those dollars, and that's mainly because you have to show growth, and since we're a pretty high achieving district to begin with, it makes it more difficult to move, to move higher. And I'll, I'll go over the scoring criteria in just a minute here, but essentially, you know, we just got our MEEP scores back a week or so ago, and as you look at those, we don't believe that, based on the, the numbers that we saw, that we're gonna get any of those dollars, but we'll have to see where that ends up. The best practices incentive, as I explained before, it's still seven of eight criteria, although there's some new expanded criteria in red, and I'll just go over what those, those changes are. With regard to the district being the policyholder, there were some districts that were part of this VIBO, which is kind of a voluntary employee benefit association, and so it wasn't qualifying before, and so they're adding that so those districts can meet that criteria, it doesn't really affect us, but it is out there. The competitive bid now has to exclude basically the unfunded accrued liability costs, specifically retirement, so when you look at doing those computations and looking at those comparisons, you have to exclude those costs when you're looking at those particular items, what you bid out. On number six, this online learning, we now have to publish the online syllabus, the only online courses we offer are through Michigan Virtual, so we'll probably just have some type of link on our website to, to link right to Michigan Virtual where they have all that listed, so. And then lastly, this district dashboard, the financial specifically, they're requiring some additional information now, some future financial projections, so you have to look out in the future to try to give some projections with regard to where you're gonna be in the future. And in addition, you're gonna have to have a detailed schedule of your debt and all the outstanding debt issues and how that's being paid. Now, we have that in our audit, part of the transparency requirements, that we publish our audit, and that's all in the footnotes to our audit, so whether we have to point to that or we actually have to publish that again, I'm not certain as to how that's gonna work out, but, um, based on at least what we know for this year, we believe that we can meet those criteria again this year because we met them last year and they really haven't changed. The only one that we couldn't meet was this number eight, which was this physical education or health education policies, these state board policies, you had to meet that, and because, one, we didn't have enough physical education in our elementary and middle schools, and the other piece was the health education consistent with the policy that we didn't have the right criteria to meet either of those policies, and those policies were a few years back, so. So, we, we, at this point, we believe that we can at least get the sixteen dollars by meeting the seven of the eight criteria. Not a huge amount of money, but at least it is some dollars. And as I mentioned before, this, a student academic performance incentive form, that's still out there, and it's this crazy point system where depending upon, you know, where you move, you know, you're either given points or you're not given points, and so you can actually have a high achieving student that might go from advanced to highly proficient. I have specific knowledge of that with my, one of my kids, who actually was advanced and went to highly proficient, still did extremely well on the MEEP, but because he declined, so you can blame it on my kids, at least one of my kid. But essentially, it's like I say, it's those high achieving districts where it's very, you know, once, once you're advanced, you have to maintain that just to get the, you know, just to get the two points, or, uh, just to get the, yeah, the two points in this, in this year, if you're performing proficient, you maintain, but if you declined at all, then you, you know, you lose points, and so, um, so we don't believe we're gonna get any of these dollars, although what I've heard, and Dave, maybe you can comment, is that there's not enough dollars currently in this to be able to fund the full hundred dollars per student, is what I've heard, but, um, so even if we were to get dollars, it may not even be the full amount. So, there was only a handful of districts in the county last year that even got even a portion of this, so, not really something that, you know, it's really in the ballpark for us, so. Enrollment, that's another critical piece of what we look at for next year. These are just initial projections based on retention ratios, and if you look at our numbers over here, we're gonna be down, you know, roughly twenty students, however, when you look at blended, take your spring count, fall count, it's probably more like around fourteen students, and I'll go over that in just a minute, but just to point out, we're initially looking at kindergarten, those numbers being a little more conservative than we've been in the past, going from a hundred and eighty to a hundred and sixty. We do have a retirement this year at kindergarten, and so the, the plan is not to replace that position, so we're gonna lose kids, but we're not gonna replace the teacher, so there's some offsetting, um, costs against the revenue that we're not gonna get from there. And then the other, the other piece is the middle school, high schools, as you're seeing, we have this eighth grade class that's at a hundred and ninety-three that's moving to the high school, so you're gonna, you're seeing a shift of about twenty-five, thirty students, less at the high school, more at the middle school, so we'll probably see, see a shift between staffing between the high, high school and the middle school. So, but overall, pretty, pretty steady with regard to enrollment. Chris? Well, you, we had, I think, Sharon, we identified seven or eight kids in that category. This is basically that they have to be five by November first now, and so you can apply for a waiver, but you have to do that prior to June thirtieth, I think, is?
June first.
June first.
And August first.
So, whether those parents decide to do that, because unfortunately, some parents don't really engage until the end, so we could potentially lose them there. As in, as always in the past, if those numbers are up, then we adjust our staffing accordingly, so. So those were our enrollment numbers projected. School of Choice numbers, those numbers haven't really changed much percentage-wise, over the last couple of years, we're hovering around thirteen percent, and that mainly is due to the fact that we've pretty much filled the gaps, that's what we've done, other than kindergarten where we try to take as many as we can at kindergarten, what we've done in the past is fill the gaps at certain grade levels based on where we might have some openings. But because our class sizes are pretty maxed out at all levels now, there's really not a lot of room for school of choice at this point unless we add additional sections, and it's really unlikely that you'll get twenty second graders or twenty third graders where you could potentially open up another section, so, um, so I don't anticipate that the school of choice numbers will be much higher than we've had in the past. As you look at this, this in and out, this is the kids that come in and then the, the students that go out, and so net, we're around three hundred and sixty, and that's about thirteen percent. Most of the out students that leave our district are from East Lansing and Okemos, and we pretty much swap, you know, the amount of kids that go out, we get roughly the same amount that come in from those districts. So really, there are very few districts that we actually lose kids to, and our biggest gain is from Lansing, mainly because they're the largest district in the county, over a hundred kids that come in from, from the Lansing school district. Excuse me. As Mike mentioned, these are just preliminary numbers, you know, we're down five students from, from last year. High school numbers are the hardest numbers to, we don't have those numbers yet because of all the blended FTEs with kids doing dual enrollment and career center and all those types of things, and so these are just preliminary numbers, but the good news is there's not a significant decline, which usually from fall to spring, we see those numbers go down mainly. As Mike mentioned, at the high school, we see kids that are graduating early or, or leaving, and so that's, that's where our numbers are for the spring, and this represents ten percent of our count, so this is kind of our first budget number with regard to enrollment, will be the ten percent, and then the ninety percent will be with what we look at at the fall, and those percentages didn't change in the governor's budget. So, as I look at thirteen fourteen, these are just some initial assumptions that we've looked at. At this point, the revenue projections are based on the governor's budget that he's put out, we don't think that there's gonna be many changes from that, given that there's a Republican Senate and House, it's probably gonna look pretty close, although you never know when things get political, but the enrollment decline, as I mentioned, fourteen FTEs, the retirement rate increase, at this point, no salary step or lane advancements for thirteen fourteen, and that's one of the things, one of the positives that we have is that, you know, going in negotiations, you know, we're not forced to do that unless it's a part of the contract settlement. In addition, the, the health insurance piece too, that all health insurance increase costs will be passed on to employees until we can, can, we can get a contract, and so really much, on the expense side, as you'll see in a minute, it's pretty much flat, you know, as far as where we're going for next year. In the past, it's usually been those steps, you know, that are built in that we have to put in the budget, the health insurance increases in retirement, and most of those are pretty flat for next year. So if you look at, uh, kind of putting this all together, the fourteen student reduction, the seven thousand dollars per student, we're starting with a, a deficit of about two hundred thousand dollars, and then you add on the best practice loss and then the potential loss of, um, state aid because of those fourteen kids that we're losing, you know, that's about two hundred thousand dollars there, assuming there's no increases in, in costs on the expense side, which at least at this point, I think it's a relatively conservative amount, because like I say, we haven't, all our contracts are open, and so we're gonna go in, you know, with, with pretty much no new revenue, so at this point, you know, that's kind of what we're standing, yeah, Dave? Correct, we have four right now, and s-
You, you have any where you're safe?
I haven't yet, no, we have not done that yet, this is just strictly what we, what we've got right now. As I mentioned in the finance facilities meeting, we do know that we're not gonna replace the kindergarten teacher, we're not gonna replace, I believe, a second or third grade teacher, and so there's two reductions right there, staffing, and then we have, we will have potentially some savings from those reprints depending upon who we hire and where we put them at, but, um, you know, if in fact we, we reduce those two sections, kindergarten holds stable, probably half, if not more than that, because then you have the additional amount for all the kindergarten, those consumables, and that was a one-time expenditure, probably around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the expense side that we can reduce, assuming all those things happen, so you're taking the four hundred thousand dollars down to maybe a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand, you know, that's just kind of initial, which the good news is it's a lot less than we've anticipated in the past, we've had, you know, big, big deficits going into the year. But, you know, you got all, you got all zeros on this side, so that's probably not realistic, but at least it's, like I say, this is just an initial look to see where we're going, you know, we're, we're hopefully gonna be starting negotiations with some of our groups here pretty soon, and hopefully we'll get a feel for potentially where that's gonna take us, but as I mentioned before, you know, we're down to one point seven million, and we, we made a conscious effort to take a little out last year to help, you know, to recognize at least something for our employees, but that was one time, and, you know, we've said, you know, we can only go so low on our fund balance as far as employees' contracts are concerned, but, you know, net, net is that we're not really getting any new money, and we're actually losing a little when you take into consideration the best practices, so. The other things to consider for budget and planning for next year, the building and site sinking fund, you know, that's an issue out there that we're gonna explore with regard to, are we gonna move forward on potentially a new millage for that? Special ed program, programming, as I, as I mentioned, you know, special ed costs have continued to go up year after year after year, and so we're looking at a different model that potentially either could save us costs or at least be neutral and, and try to hold the cost down, because every year we've added on special ed costs, and, and that's mainly just because these high needs students that we have require either additional parapros or additional staffing to do that. And then the last is, as I mentioned, contract negotiations, everybody's up this year, and so we don't know where that's gonna land, and depending upon where we go there could potentially affect our budget too. So, obviously that's just an initial look, like I say, it's good news, bad news. Good news, we're not getting any new money, bad news is there's not a huge potential deficit looming out there at this point, so, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any. Sure. Well, I'm at, they're talking, what's, two point six percent increase, and that's mainly due to the funding into this, into the school aid fund, but those, those dollars that, the increased dollars into the school aid fund don't necessarily translate into dollars distributed back to- Correct. And the bottom line, like I say, is that the dollars into the school aid fund are more because, you know, things are better, the state's in a lot better economic situation, but the reality is, is that there's not enough, you know, when you look at other areas of the school aid fund that may not distribute dollars back to individual school districts, you know, we're actually pretty much flat or even negative when you look at the best practices piece, so.
It kind of comes back to Rob's question about, isn't there, isn't there a big chunk of money?
It kinda comes back to Rob's question about, isn't there, isn't there a big chunk of money we're gonna have to pay for, for retirement increase? And the rate itself would be going up to almost thirty percent, but the state put a cap on it for local districts and so, part of that two percent, um, is going to pay that. So, that's, you know, upwards of four hundred million dollars to pay for that added piece. And we may actually see it in our budget when we officially pass it. Because, um, there's still some questions, uh, whether it's worded, that schools may still have to recognize revenue for payments made on their behalf to the retirement system. So, even though it won't necessarily flow through us, or if it does, it's an in and out, um, we may still have to book it as twenty-nine percent instead of twenty-four and then recognize the extra revenue. But those are the kinds of things that we may see as changes in, in the actual bills because what they wrote maybe is not what they intended to have happen. So, as these kinda things come to, to light as we, is, is looked at more detailed, uh, basis, then, uh, we may see some changes. But right now, um, that's, that's the biggest reason is that the retirement piece is eating up that extra money. I mean, and, and basically the bottom line is, the, the monies coming into the school aid fund, um, are not, they're increasing but not at a high enough rate to cover the inflationary costs that, that public schools have. So, it means that districts will again be taking a look at cuts. Reductions, cuts, whatever you wanna call it.
You know, the other thing is Dave mentioned that retirement's still a looming question out there because there's these, uh, potential costs that are still out there from, you know, if, if they freeze the rate, there's still some, because of all the contracting and things that have gone on over the last few years, there's, there's still some, some costs that potentially might be passed on back to districts depending upon how, how they end up with retirement system. So, we're not really out of the woods, it's just, I think, they're at least stagnant from this, from this point.
And there are other bigger issues out there that, that, uh, the administration's trying to deal with, with transportation funding and things like that. And if they look at transportation funding and wanna remove the sales tax on gas, which we get the bulk of, then, if there's not replacement revenues, then, then we've got other issues to deal with. So, you know, it's, it's a cautionary, we're about even with where we were, maybe a little bit down based on prior years with, with our costs increasing, so. I, I think you, your reflection of the budget challenges are still there, so.
So, we, um, you know, uh, we passed out a budget calendar, um, to the finance facilities committee and, you know, essentially we have to tell the end of June to pass our budget. But, really, we, it, it's mainly based on enrollment and staffing, those are the two basic pieces of this and we usually try to, to finalize that sometime first part of May. We've met with our principals and, and we've looked at some initial loo-, um, looks at what that might look like for as far as staffing, but that's, that's really the main piece of this. And so, once we get that in place, then, then we'll have a better picture of where we're going. But like I say, um, we don't anticipate, especially with the four teachers that are retiring, we don't anticipate, at least from the teacher ranks now, other groups it just, it'll all depend upon how we, um, set the staffing levels for, for the other groups, so. You have to exclude it. I'm, I'm not sure the reasoning behind that, but I think it's, it's really to take that piece out because that's really the big, um, issue when it comes to contracting is the retirement cost. When you talk about thirty percent, you know, when, when you can contract out, you know, the, a contractor's not gonna have a thirty percent rate on retirement, you know, for their employee groups. And so, that's really the big piece. So, I think we're taking that out to try to make it more of an apples to apples comparison, you know, when you're looking at that. Doesn't say that you have, doesn't tell you what you have to do, it's just they're saying, I assume Dave, and you can help me with this, is that they just want a different look at how you look at contracting when you're, when you're bidding out those services. Well, well, they, they want you to exclude that cost, so when you compare contracting versus doing it, um, internally, they want you to take that cost out of your cost. So, so you have to look at that without that retirement piece. Now, that does, like I said, they don't force you to then make the decision based upon that. But I think it's just to get a better look at really how you're comparing those two things. And I, I, like I said, I don't really understand the logic behind that, but, um, I guess you'd have to talk to someone at the legislature. You know, every year we think, man, you know, you think you understand it and then there's something else to run out there and get more confused, so, anyway. Stay tuned, you know, we'll have, uh, more information as it becomes available and as we start to get a clearer picture, uh, you know, we'll, we'd be meeting with the facilities finance committee again as we get closer to look at, you know, how those things change, staffing and, and so on and so forth. So, but this is just an initial look at where we are for next year, so. Well, we don't really, the only thing that we really know at this point is, is, uh, federal funds, is, uh, title one, title two, IDA, um, money. And I, you know, a lot of that money, some of that money flows through, through the county, some of it goes directly, uh, our title one allocation, you know, whether that'll be reduced. Um, you know, that potentially could affect us. I mean, we get about two hundred thousand dollars in title one funds and so, um, in addition, another maybe sixty thousand in title two, sixty, seventy thousand. So, two hundred and seventy thousand just title funds, um, you know, if they reduce those funds then, um, you know- It's expense driven, so we have to, we get them as we spend them. So, we, we initiate cost reimbursement reports. Well, we've, we, uh, we, we basically, yeah, we basically submitted what we've had, but that's not to say that they can go back and say, we're just gonna reduce it and whatever you submit, you're not gonna get the balance of what you've, what you've received or what you've been awarded, so. Um, and then the IDA are, or the IDA money, there's quite a few dollars that comes through the special ed, um, formula there, so if that affects that, that could affect our special ed allocation from the ISD, so. We- At this point, yeah, until we know differently.
It's about a five point three percent reduction, kinda, if it's across the board.
For title?
Well, for federal funds.
For federal funds.
As part of this, so, it's, it's not like it's gonna have a huge impact.
Yeah, so you're talking maybe fifteen, twenty thousand dollars overall, at least from just our direct, uh, federal funds that we get.
Steve, we're down to six point six percent roughly for our, uh, fund balance. What, what's the standard that is suggested for gestures on that?
Well, that's changed over the years. You know, twenty years ago, M E A said, you should have a twenty percent fund balance. I don't think they'd be saying that right now. Um, you know, I've always used the ten percent kind of as, as a rule, but, um, you know, it, a lot depends on your operation and what you do. But I would say, you know, ten percent would be a goal. Obviously, in these economic times, I mean, we've been cutting every year for the last six years, at least. And so, you know, we've been using part of that, um, you know, I'd, I'd obviously like to have more, but, you know, it's, I, I would say ten percent is, is a pretty conservative amount to have. Uh, you know, look at countywide, that's what the average is. But I think statewide averages, I think that's probably higher. I think it was eleven, twelve percent last time I looked, um, last year, so, you know, there again, we're on the lower end, but, you know, we've not, we've, I think the good news is we've made the reductions over the last several years, so we're not in a position of having these multi-million dollar deficits using fund balance and then at some point having to address that. You know, if you got a million dollar deficit, using fund balance, at some point that comes, you know, comes to, to haunt you. And so, you know, we don't have a lot of fund balance, but we don't have huge deficits because we've been, we've been making those tough decisions over the last few years. And so, you know, hopefully that's gonna pay off in the next couple of years, you know, that we don't have any really significant cuts in the next couple of years, but you know, you never know, so. Never out of the woods.
Well, that's exactly why we did the one-time payment last time rather than creating a structural deficit that's going to come back to haunt us in future years too, as I, as I understand it.
And it's unfortunate, you know, you, a, a lot of our young teachers, you know, they haven't had their steps and, you know, that's powerful of course, but that's, you know, I think over time that potentially is gonna affect some districts and your ability to attract good talent if you don't have adequate pay system to pay these folks, so. The, the good news is it's the same everywhere. I mean, it's not like, uh, other districts aren't feeling the same pinch as we are, but it's still, it's still not pleasant, so.
Any other questions for Steve?
Stay tuned.
Is the final amendment-
Will be in June. So, the first, uh, meeting in June will present the, both the proposed budget for thirteen fourteen and the final amendment for the year that we're currently in. No, it's just, you know, you try to, we try to be as conservative as we can, you know, making the, the adjustments, but, you know, you try to fine tune that as you get to the end of the year. And we do have contingency money, there's, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars we have in contingency right now, that's not been spent, so the reason being is that, you know, in case something happens. The good news is we haven't had to tap into that for, for this year, so, you know, all else being equal, we'd potentially be better than that because of the contingency dollars. But, you know, you never know, I mean, it's gonna snow tomorrow and could snow for the next two months, you know, you just, you never know, you know, we've, our, uh- I know, I know, my son tells me every night, it's gonna be a snow day, so. But, you know, you just, those, those are the unpredicted types of things. You know, eighty-five percent of our budget's people and that's pretty standard, but, you know, with extra hours and overtime and things like that, you know, you just never know, so. Thank you everyone.
Thank you. Board reports, Policy and Personnel Committee.
We have not met, but I suspect that we will be put this up on the calendar here.
Very good. Finance and Facilities? Okay, we have, uh, well, we have items from board members, that's next. Um, do we have any items from board members? Jerry? Speaking of the, the township, uh, too bad I didn't think of this when, uh, Ron Seiko was still here, but, who, does anyone know where we stand with replacing, uh, Jerry Richards? Do they have, uh, anyone that they've narrowed it down to? Okay, just curious. Yes?
And it was about the oxygen inhalation.
Uh, I went to the Royal Science Night last Friday and, uh, that was fun as always. It's neat seeing all the different ideas of science, uh, uh, experiments and, and results on that, that was- Yeah, yeah, there was, um, uh, I didn't see that many volcanoes this year. It was a lot of different things. I did see, well, I won't go into what I saw, but there, there were a lot of good, different things there. It's also very gratifying to see all the community people that come out, uh, to, uh, work at that and put on presentations, uh. I, I'm not going to mention names because I'd mentioned two or three names and lord knows how many people I'd leave out. Uh, but, uh, but, you know, you couldn't help but notice that walking down the hallway and looking at and seeing someone in there giving a demonstration to all the students on something and just being a, a good community member, so that's, that's really cool. Uh, no other, uh, items from board members? Yes, David?
I'll, I'll do one prop here, item, but I, I was, uh, yesterday afternoon, um, there were a couple, uh, new Eagle Scouts, uh, that went through Court of Honor. Ben McMillan, um, from Hazlet High School and then my son Brian, so it was kinda nice to see a couple young men in the community who kinda went through a long, strenuous, uh, but important, um, growth and leadership and, and skills to become Eagle Scouts, which is only about three percent of those who start Scouts, so. Uh, I'll be a proud Papa for once here and, and, uh, do that, but also Ben McMillan. And so, it was a nice, uh, nice event and, uh, it was a good number of people there, so it's, I'll, I'll give him a shout out. And he, um, I think Ben had, uh, put up some, um, some, some, I guess, display cases for the all-American, academic all-American pieces, uh, the certificates that are there, so. And then Brian actually did, um, at Lake Lansing Park North, um, the county wanted, um, another fire pit built. So that, uh, it was tall enough so little kids couldn't fall in and keep it, and the outside cool enough so that nobody would get burned, so. Uh, we're, well, a lot of the, um, younger Girl Scouts and Cub Scouts do some day camp and overnight, so, uh, that was his project. I certainly did. At his direction.
Congratulations to both of them. Uh, talking about accomplishments reminds me that I received an email regarding our, uh, Haslett Robotics Team. And, uh, rather than getting it totally wrong, I will, uh, I will look at my email to inform you what they, uh, what they said. But the, um, Haslett Middle School Vex Robotics Team, uh, at, uh, MSU Sunday, they placed seventh and sixteenth out of forty-seven teams. And the Haslett High School, uh, Vex Robotics Team, the Vex Raptors, on Sunday won the prestigious design award at the Vex State Tournament in MSU. And that qualified them to go on to the, uh, world competition in California again. Yes, so, that's, uh, quite an accomplishment. Okay, are we finally really done with our, uh, some board members?
Yeah, good, there's never too much good news.
Yeah, that's right. It's good stuff. Uh, we have three action items, um, I will go through them and then see if anyone wants any of them pulled. We have the- We have the approval of minutes of the February eleven, two thousand thirteen Regular Meeting, approval of minutes of the February twenty-second, two thousand thirteen Finance and Facilities Committee Meeting, and an out-of-state field trip request, uh, for the eighth graders to go to Cedar Point. Does anyone want any of those action items pulled? We have a motion to approve the action items as presented. We have a motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? The action items all pass. Uh, announcements. The M A S A and M A S B Legislative Conference will be held on March five, two thousand thirteen from seven forty-five A M to two fifteen P M at the Lansing Center. And the next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on March eleven, two thousand thirteen, seven P M, right here in the boardroom of the Haslett Administration Building. And lastly, the Governor's Education Summit is scheduled for April twenty-second, two thousand thirteen at the Kellogg Center. With that, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor of adjourned? Oppose? You're back at it again, Mr. Fowler. Once again, Mr. Fowler is outvoted. We are adjourned.
So, I mean, they gotta leave sometime, they must leave. It's in Arlington, near the Pentagon. It's an underground shopping mall.
It's the next, it's the next stop of, of the Pentagon on the subway.
They must be staying in hotel, Crystal State, because everything's around.
Welcome back. Item two of the discussion items, uh, field trip request, Ross Brower and Diane Diamond.
Good evening. I'm here to ask permission to take the high school band to Korea.
Are you emailing them too?
Yeah, we've been emailing for about three years now.
You have to be able to prove it, Ross.
I want to, I, I want to go back and be in Margaret's classroom. You know, the neat thing, I was talking with Tom, is, is, uh, to stick a feather in Margaret's cap is that it's just not this. Her classroom is alive like this. Everything she touches, just, she's just marvelous. You should walk it, walk into her classroom sometime. It's always a joy when I'm over there. I really am here, uh, to ask permission to take the band to Washington, D.C. We've been working for about a half a year with the same travel consultants that work, uh, at the middle school when the seventh and eighth grade goes places. And be, before I start that, I'd like to say thank you again for the new uniforms. They came in this afternoon. That's the good news. The bad news is we won't have them hemmed for Friday night, but next Friday night, we'll be in our new uniforms, just evening. We are asking, uh, to go this May to Washington, D.C., and, uh, the cost of the trip is three hundred dollars. When we went to Florida two years ago, it was four hundred and fifty, and we felt that since we hadn't taken a trip for three years at that point, we could spend a little more, but we've really tried to keep it right at three, and, uh, I think we have a very great itinerary. Uh, a little different focus in this tour, that we're not, at this point, scheduled into any sort of festival or competition. We are spending a morning in Plinett, um, at the University of Maryland with the band director there, and we are playing on the Capitol steps. So, uh, there may not be that trophy opportunity, but the playing experiences will be there, and I think it'll be very memorable. One of the things when we went to Florida, we were trying to give the kids opportunities and little, uh, pictures that they could hold in, in their minds. And one of the things that will always be in our memory is when we marched down the main street in Disney World and, you know, Mickey's out there and everybody's waving to you. It's just, and the castles, you, you come around the corner and the castle's there. Um, I think playing on the Capitol steps will be something that they will remember forever. And in lieu of not being able to go to Korea, I think Washington, D.C. is about as foreign as any of us we see here. Um, at this point, I'd like to introduce Diane Diamond, who you know as middle school secretary. I'm getting to know is a band mom now. Before Diane was secretary at the middle school, she was a travel agent, and so I found out about this, and, uh, she is now our travel agent, uh, coordinator for Band Boosters. So, Diane, we'll talk to you more about the trip.
Thank you. Um, I was fortunate enough to be able to go to Washington, D.C., uh, with Travel Adventures this summer to preview this trip. Um, the fact that they let me do that, in my mind, shows me how reliable and what a good company this is. As a travel agent, in the past, I was able to do this kind of thing, and I can tell you that this company is top-notch and I really have a lot of confidence in them. It gave me the opportunity to, um, actually, I went with all teachers. I was the only secretary there. Um, but it gave me the opportunity to ask them point blank what their impression is and of, uh, Travel Adventure, and everyone that I talked to had just nothing but good things to say, um, and are definitely using them again, and so that made me feel really good. Um, I think that you have copies of the itinerary, um, that we're looking at. Uh, we will be leaving on Thursday night and traveling all night. We will be encouraging the students to bring pillows and blankets because they will be sleeping on the bus. That's probably the, the worst part of the whole trip, but you do, uh, find a position that's somewhat comfortable and make the best of it. Um, we have a lot of things planned. Not anything any more than what I think we can do because I did it, and I know that these high school kids are younger than I am, so I think that they'll be able to, uh, follow the same itinerary. Does anybody have any questions? Have you had a chance to look at it, or? Um, do you want me to go over it, or?
Questions?
Is this during the spring break? Is that?
No, it is not. Believe me, spring break in Washington, D.C. would be disastrous.
It would be a travel nightmare, and that's why I wondered. I, I just wondered what the timing on it was in relation to the, to the break is.
Um, actually, it's just about the same time that the choir went last year to Chicago, and, um, it works well between all the activities that are going on sports-wise. This weekend tends to be one of the better weekends for track meets and softball and things like that, so that's how we came up with that date.
But there is, but on the calendar, on, on the first, the day you leave, there is the State Choir Festival. It's listed in the calendar. How would that affect?
Well, we won't be leaving until the evening, so they should be back.
Other questions?
Yeah, the three hundred dollars is the, uh, does that cover all, all meals?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Everybody going?
I hope so. Um, at this point, we're hoping that everybody does. I haven't, you know, we're just in the beginning stages of it, but.
If a child, if a child doesn't have three hundred dollars, how would he, how would he or she be able to?
Well, we'll be giving them opportunities for fundraisers. Um, actually, the boosters were talking about that very thing right now, trying to come up with, um, ideas. Um, I know that last year, for instance, the choir, they had fundraisers and there were a couple of students who earned enough money on their own to go. Um, are there scholarships available, Ross? I'm not real sure about how that works.
I think there are work opportunities.
Is, is there a mechanism enforced for a parent to notify somebody, um, I don't mean in secret, but in other words, so that it's not a stigmatism, so that they would know that they, I can't afford this for my child, and they would not be, it would not be broadcast to the rest of the band, or it wouldn't be a situation where a child could potentially be embarrassed by the fact that they may not be able to afford it. I, I guess I'm curious to know, and I don't want a kid backing out of this because I don't really wanna go to Washington. I don't like Wa- I don't like hot places in the spring or Magnolias or whatever, and making up excuses, but they, what, what the bottom, the root cause of this is, like, we can't afford it. The parent looked him right straight in the eye at dinner and said, you can't go because we haven't got three hundred bucks. I guess I'm, I'm curious to know as to how that, how the Band Boosters get around that, um, will get around that, uh, if a child would like to go but can't afford it.
Well, it's my understanding that we would give them that opportunity to let us know in writing, I would imagine. I certainly wouldn't want people to raise their hands and, and bring that up, um.
I don't think you'd get much of a response or a show of hands.
No, I don't either. Um, I guess that, in my mind, it's not any different than any other trips that, that, you know, that I've been involved with, with my children. Um, I think you just basically let people know that if there is a problem, they need to let us know, and then we try to work with them.
Did it all go to Florida? Did the whole band go to Florida, Ross?
Um, I think there were four people who didn't go, but it was not because of money.
Ross, Ross, could you come up with a microphone? They can't hear you back there.
I think.
It's not us.
We can hear you, but.
Some people at the other end of the tube.
Tell them, tell them some people can't.
Yeah, I think there were about four kids who didn't go to Florida. None were left because of money. Um, I think boosters probably paid about fifteen hundred dollars in scholarship money.
Just wanna make sure that that's not overlooked.
You know, as, yes, as with everything we do with Band Camp or uniforms or whatever, we always, you know, ask that we be contacted and we help out.
Other questions? How many will be going? How many?
We have a hundred and twenty enrolled. So, I would imagine, um, probably reasonably.
Why don't you just stay here until we're done?
Please, well, yes, we can buy another camera and microphone. A hundred and twenty are enrolled in band. I would guess that, mm, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and sixteen would probably end up going. Uh, plus, we'll probably take about thirty parents.
Can I just, I'm looking at itinerary that I, I, I see departing for Toledo at ten o'clock at night. Is that right? Am I reading that right? You go to Washi- you go to dinner, you go to Washington Monument, and then you leave.
Yes, and you sleep on the bus.
You sleep on the bus, you arrive in Toledo for breakfast, and then we're gonna take a hundred and twenty kids to an art museum?
Have you ever been to that museum?
Oh, no, no, I, no, I haven't, but I, I just, I'm trying to picture myself sleeping on a bus all night and then going to breakfast and then an art museum. I'm having a little trouble. Stimulating my interest here. I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hit the arts here, but I just.
You have to, you have to pretend you're ten years younger in the same, in the same age.
That would be, that would be thirty years younger in this game. Only ten?
It's a corral for waiting to be kept back.
There's a, okay, I'm just curious to, to where that came from. I mean, it doesn't look like it fits with the rest of it.
Well, if we got them back in the morning, um, first off, if they're too tired to go to school at that point, we figure, and we certainly aren't gonna be able to every parent take the day off from work to retrieve their child. So, we are planning something for them, so that we will get them back more in the afternoon when most people are out of work. So, that's the main, main reason for, for doing that.
I just, after all of this travel, I, I just can't envision my, if I had a child that was going, that would, all of a sudden, the Toledo Art Museum would be way up on my list after driving all night on a bus.
Yeah, well, um.
I mean, not, nothing wrong with the legal art museum. I'm sure it's very nice, but, uh.
I think that, I think that the kids will get more sleep on the bus than what you think they might. First off, the, you know, the seats recline. Um, I don't know, myself and my kids, when I'm tired, I just fall asleep, but, you know, I suppose not everybody's like that. Um, it's a, it's a valid point. Um, nevertheless, I think that there's gonna be a lot of enthusiasm and I don't really see it as a problem.
That does bring up a question for me, and that is, is there a, a point in there where they can, um, get cleaned up and stuff, either before or after breakfast?
Well, um, when I went on that trip, the bus drivers have to stop, um, every so often. I mean, it's part of their contract, and they stop at very large rest areas where, um, the restrooms have places to wash, brush your teeth, things like that, so that's what we did. There weren't showers, but, you know.
So, yeah, but, so they'll be doing something like that for the kids. Cause I'm, having a fifteen-year-old daughter, I know there's no way she'd go anywhere without a chance to wash her face and clean up. My seventeen-year-old son with my daughter. Hope they're not watching.
Yeah, trust. Others?
I, uh, you wanna go? I, I think the brand trip's wonderful. I think going to Washington is wonderful. I have some problems with the itinerary, uh, other than the performance parts, and, uh, rather than spend some time on that, I, I think I'll propose to meet with Ross and whoever on this, but the art is, the museum is a good one. When the National Gallery is right next to the Archives, I'm not sure why, why we aren't going, if we're gonna go to art museum, the National Gallery that has art that they'll never see anyplace else in the world, uh, in Washington, D.C., would be certainly my choice.
You're referring to the first, the first day of the itinerary?
I'm, I don't see that, you know, the National Gallery.
Okay.
And so if you were picking art museums, for example.
No, we aren't. The, on the first day, um, you'll see the Smithsonian's. Those are just a few of them listed. It's not, is that what you're referring to?
No, I'm just saying.
Oh, the To- oh, okay.
I'm saying you have the Toledo Art Museum, I mean, I'd rather have, maybe if it's music oriented, stop at the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame on the way back in Cleveland.
Well, we've thought about that, but it's more money. So, we're trying to keep the cost down, basically.
If you go to Washington, D.C., you eliminate the night driving, which is the whole point. So, you really have to go someplace.
That's right.
Within that same radius, so.
But I, I'm just saying, I think that that's, there may be a point to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, even pay it a little extra, and go to some, most of everything in, 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 in Washington is free. And there's no admittance charge for, I don't know about the Peterson House. I've never been to the Peterson House. I'm not quite sure.
Peterson House is free?
So, I, I just, I have some suggestions and I'll make those separately, but I, I have some questions. Some rides when ninety percent of it's underground and things like that.
Joel?
Have fun. Enjoy it. I think it's a wonderful experience for the kids and, uh, it looks awfully busy. Uh, maybe some of the places you're there got quite long enough, or, you know, maybe it's flexible. I don't know. I'm sure things will change as time goes on. And I just hope the government's operating and everything's open for you.
I, um, I guess the one, the one comment I would make falls, I guess, along the lines of, of what Scott was noting. Um, on the fourth day of a trip, when I think the kids have probably been not sleeping very well any of the nights, especially on the bus ride back, uh, you might wanna give consideration to arriving early on Monday, so that Tuesday is preserved back at school, whereas getting back. whereas getting back late, there may be a different issue there. I, you know, most of the kids, I think, are high school kids, and, and I know, uh, by that time, I think most parents would trust that that child can go home, um, so, just a, just a consideration.
But would they miss school then, that day? Is that what you're?
Well, I, it looks like they're going to anyways, and I think that after a bus ride overnight from Washington, having spent several days with friends, uh, I don't care how old they are, you know what they're going to be doing there, most of the time, we're not going to get as much sleep as we'd have gotten probably in a longer time at home, so, I, I don't know, it's just a suggestion.
I'd be more concerned about them going to school on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Not, it's not Monday, it's Monday that I'm not worried about when I travel.
Monday it would appear to be gone. I don't know the regulations on whether they would have to attend on Monday or not. I sort of doubt that that would be the case, but, you know, just a, a consideration of something that maybe, I'm, I'm, I would be concerned about them being able to function at an art museum after what all they've been through, and I'm sure they're going to have a wonderful time there, et cetera, so, that would be my only suggestion on it.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we get into that exciting time of the evening we've all been waiting for. Sorry, Bruce. Uh, Bruce Dunn, uh, is our auditor from Mann, Custeri, Custerison, no, I tried to, tried not to do that. Mann or Custer, uh, Mann or Custerison and Ellis, finally, PC, uh, about our audit for the year. Bruce?
Uh, I, uh, I don't want to go, I, I'm not here to ask for money to go to Korea, or go to Washington DC, but I will try to explain, uh, how last year went for you fiscally. First off, uh, thank you for giving me the time to present this, uh, information to the board, and this is the second year of school finance reform. So, a year ago, presentation was probably a little bit lengthy, we had quite a few changes. Uh, we can all still debate, uh, what, what the changes were, whether they're good or bad, but we're going to go back and just try to compare where we were for June ninety-six. And a couple of things for the board, if you have your report, I'm going to just try to go through some of the highlights, and then I'll entertain any questions that you may have. General fund revenues, and that's the bulk of, uh, the bulk of the revenues in the district are run through the general fund. Now that we're in the proposal lay for the second year, we're able to see that at least from a standpoint of where our money comes from, it's relatively, uh, the same as it has been in the prior years. Approximately eighty percent of the revenue came from the state last year, seventy-nine percent this year, uh, only two percent from the federal government, five percent from other local sources, seven percent from prop, property taxes. So we've got, we're in a situation where for ninety-six, we're able to see that there wasn't much change on where the money came from. Same for ninety-six, as far as expenditures go, we look and we can see that instruction, and when we talk about expenditures in, uh, in a school district audit report, the expenditures are categorized by various functions, and the functions, as a local board, you can't put these expenditures how you would like to, or maybe many of us might say it would be a common or rational methodology on how they go together. We have to follow the state chart of accounts, and those are broken down into two primary areas. One is instruction, one support services. And when you look at those categories, especially those statistics, I noticed in the back of the room today, you have the big state report, expenditures by students, and all the good information. When you talk about instruction, you're really talking about direct cost of salaries and benefits of the teachers, and that provide the instruction, but if you look for a for-profit, or if you look back into your business, you'll notice there's other direct costs that are related to, uh, providing the service and the product. Some of those might be instructional aids, the utilities, the buildings, transportation, the business office. These are always put in to support services. So when you're comparing your overall cost to the district, it's not fair or accurate to say support services is this, just this fictitious thirty percent overhead, because there are an awful lot of things that go into it. The cleaning, the maintenance, transportation, buses, business office, everything goes into there. But that's how we are to do that. The good side of that is, ever, all five hundred and fifty-five school districts do it that way, so at least you can compare school district by school district by school district, and that's really what the state is trying to draw a line on. But it's not accurate to say that instruction is just teacher salaries, because we have a lot of other costs that go into that. Page one of the audit report, and that's really, when you hire an auditing firm, that's what it's all about. Page one has no numbers on it, but it's our opinion, and I can only say that, our opinion is the same opinion that it's been for the last several years that we've done the audit, so there's no changes there. This is also, uh, when, when page one becomes page two, or sometimes page two and three, those are things to be alarmed about. The shorter the report in our profession, the better, because as these paragraphs tack on and on, we have more and more issues to go on. So as long as you can stay on a one-page report, for the most part, that's, that's relatively good news. The other thing that's good news for a district your size is to be able to know that when I come here, I don't have any surprises. We're already into your new school year, you've had excellent presentation with the children tonight about the things that are going on. Last thing you need to do in the middle of September is find out we had a problem about last June ninety-six. That is not fun for everybody, and that's why one of the things we look at when we do the audit is the control, safeguarding your assets, and how do you receive financial information throughout the year? We don't have a lot of changes on that. And there aren't a lot of big changes, and when I throw out some numbers here, actually, we'll mention a few numbers quickly. Total assets, thirty-five point four million last year, thirty-six point four million this year. Total liabilities, thirty-three point eight million last year, thirty-four point five million this year. Overall fund balancing, the general fund did go up a little bit, went up about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. However, went up a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars on a budget in your general fund of seventeen point four million dollars, and for a district, all funds combined, your budget was almost twenty million dollars. So when you start throwing a surplus of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, it was a surplus, but when you start putting that on a percentage basis in relation to twenty million dollar budget, relatively break-even cost. More importantly, the district felt and knew that they, where they were going to come in at the end of the year in regards to that. These day and ages, you don't have a lot of extra money one way or another to spend, and you just cannot afford to have, uh, the auditor come in with, um, one point five, two million dollar surprises at the end of the year. You just don't have that luxury anymore. Things are relatively tight for all districts in Michigan. The notes to the financial statements go along, and those go on up for several pages. A couple of things I will point out in the footnotes, one is on note eight, the employee retirement system, that's the statewide defined benefit plan. Liability statewide for all school districts on the retirement plan is thirty-four point seven billion dollars. Assets that were currently involved to fund that was eight, only eighteen point two billion dollars, so the unfunded liability on the statewide pension plan continues to grow, and at September thirtieth of ninety-five, the most recent actuary report, that's sixteen point five billion dollars. So on a long-term, uh, thing to plan for the future, you probably will anticipate, uh, your pension contribution as a district into the state retirement system continued going up, and I believe that's what the case is, effective October first for the district. The rest of the report goes on, and we have similar reports that we've had in prior years, breaking up the school service funds, special revenue funds, debt service funds, and the agency funds. In addition to that, as part of our audit, we conducted an audit in accordance with government auditing standards and so, Single Audit Act of nineteen eighty-four, and we have to issue about twenty-three pages of compliance and internal control reports, just for the federal government. Your overall report for Hazlet Public Schools for your twenty million dollar company was only thirty-seven pages long, but for the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal money you had, we had to issue twenty-three pages of reports. The good news is, twenty-three pages of reports is about as short as you can do, with no problems. That, we've had some, when you get into sixty-seventy pages, those are the ones that make the front page of the State Journal. There are no findings or questioning costs in your federal programs, and there are an awful lot of strings attached, and I think for the viewers out there, not only for federal money, but for state money, sometimes people say, "Why can't we just do things quick and easy?" The quick and easy way is not attached to federal money or state money. I saw a public show this weekend, and one of the people on it, they were talking about funding education, and one of the things they said was, "Just remember, when you accept money from the state of Michigan, it comes with strings attached, and in order to follow that, you have to follow rules." And the district does a very good job of that. We issue a separate report to the finance committee, and if there is anything of significant, significance, we would be required by professional standards to put that in writing. We don't have any issues of that nature. We also issue a letter to the Board of Education on suggestions, and that's a relatively short letter this year, uh, much shorter than it has been in years past, several years ago, and primarily what we're trying to do is work with your intermediate school districts, see if there's any way we can try to make your overall federal compliance audits effective with the new single audit regulations that are going to be effective for next year, more efficient and effective for all the districts, and the ISD Hazlet being one of them. Finally, I think this is, but since we've done your audit, this is the earliest we've been able to finish the audit. You've had this, I think, for a week or so. Our audit report was dated July thirty-first. And the only way, there's only one way, we can have our audit report to you this soon and dated by July thirty-first, and that's if your staff do an excellent job. And they do an excellent job, and we're very happy to work with them on that, because that makes it good for everybody. I think earlier this evening, it was mentioned, it's a two-way street to have a good audit. You have to, hopefully, we have to do our part of the auditors. We have to be professional, know the rules, come in in a timely, professional manner, and do, do the tough jobs, ask the tough questions, and many times, your staff may think we're from Missouri, because we do want to see it in writing. And that's our job, and that's what you expect out of us. Likewise, we expect the same kind of consideration that you expect from us, and fortunately, we get that from Hazlet Schools. And I'm convinced of this, this goes back to years ago when I was raised at the dinner table, but these things happen for a reason, and they happen at the top. And if you don't have that commitment at the top, and I'm talking about the Board of Education, it does not filter down throughout the ranks. And you don't have the kind of programs that you saw tonight with the teachers and the enthusiasm from the students, and without the school board, I just, I, there's no question. Uh, I won't say how I, how, what I think about serving at other times, but it's a privilege to be here. You're one of the first school boards I'm able to report to, and that's because your audit's done, so, from that standpoint, on behalf of the firm, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to provide professional services to the district, and on behalf of your staff, we want to extend our heartfelt thanks for allowing us to do our job in a timely, efficient manner, because they treat us with the respect and professionalism we'd like to see, and allow us to do our job. With that, I'll be happy to answer any specific questions the board may have.
Finance and Facilities did review the audit?
Yes, we did that tonight. Back versus here since six-thirty, so, poor Bruce. But yeah, we did go over it, and we heard pretty much what, uh, what you heard tonight, and, uh, we recommend its approval, and are very happy with the way it looks.
Any other, uh, items that you'd want to mention about it, or?
Just the nice, short letters at the beginning. I've been around for a long time, and those letters have been long, and, uh, we like those, the short ones with comments that are very terse and very, very positive. And the relationship, I think, we have, um, between our audit firm and, uh, our business office is great, so, we're real pleased with that.
Questions, comments?
Bruce, thank you. Uh, one thing I would like to take a moment on, and I think Bruce said this repeatedly, thank you very much for the audit, thank you for the, uh, for the praise of both Hazlet Schools and, and the school board. We deserve little of that, but nonetheless, uh, I, I think what we need to do is, is to thank Dave Martel, who has done an outstanding job, uh, in our, uh, accounting office and as our business manager, uh, taking the reins and, and really bringing the district, uh, to a level that I think we all looked forward to and now just enjoy, so. Uh, thank you, Dave, for, for everything that you've done. Bruce, thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, no other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
And now, that item we've all been waiting for, library roof replacement. Bob?
I'd like to look at Scott.
You know, we really ought to let Scott do this. It's his favorite topic.
We've been through this before.
Thanks, Bruce.
We've been fortunate over the ye, uh, last several years to invest, uh, bond proceeds from nineteen ninety, and also some general fund monies to repair, uh, certain portions of our roofs throughout the school district. Um, with this upcoming bond issue, we hope to do all of the remaining roofs, which mean that, uh, if we have a successful bond issue, all of our roofs will, would have been replaced either this go-around, or at least since nineteen ninety, which would mean that our roofs would be in, uh, very good shape for, uh, the years to come. There is a, however, a area of our high school roof that is in, uh, much-needed repair, and , uh, we're at almost a crisis point, not that we have any, uh, physical danger to anything, however, uh, any, uh, significant rain or storm will probably bring in some possible leak, leakage. And that is that portion, about fifty-two hundred square feet, which is located just above our high school media center. So, um, uh, we don't think we can delay with this repair any longer, and so we have visited with our legal counsel, and, uh, they have guided us whereby we could go out and actually seek bids, and in the event that we have a successful, uh, bond vote, uh, this upcoming Monday, we then can use bond proceeds to repair the roof. This section of roof as, is actually part of our bond application with the state, so this is scheduled to be, uh, done. The question then, however, is, in the event that the mil, the bond issue is not approved by the community, then it's our, um, suggestion that we go forth and repair the roof, and then we would be, uh, it'd be necessary for us to use general fund monies. So regardless of the upcoming election, this roof must be repaired, and, uh, as part of your agenda as an action item, you can, you would, you will note, please, that we have received bids to repair the roof, and we're recommending that we, uh, accept the bid from Stephenson's and Sons. Uh, they are the company that have been awarded most of our bids over the last several years. They're an excellent company and will do a good job. Um, we received a resolution from our, um, legal counsel, which was on your table this evening, which basically outlines, um, their recommendation on how to proceed with the, uh, passing of the resolution. Essentially, essentially what this resolution does, it gives us, uh, the authority to use general fund monies to repair the roof, and then again, pending a successful bond election, we then would be able to replenish what monies we spend out of general fund with the bond proceeds. That's essentially what this resolution says. Uh, in terms of a timeline, if the board would, would take action on this eve, uh, this evening, we would have the opportunity to, uh, let Stephenson's and Sons know that they, um, uh, have earned the bid. They would order supplies. I suspect supplies would, uh, hit the school district in about three weeks, and then Stephenson says that they will, uh, have us scheduled then to begin the work in about three or four weeks. And so we would still enjoy the good fall weather, and I think we could then be assured of a good job, and we'd have that protection throughout the winter and throughout the spring, and of course, years to come. Any questions?
Jeff?
Uh, now, the question is to comment, uh, the Finance and Services Committee did review this this, this evening, and, um, I'm pleased that, that we did see that legal counsel, because their question came up as to how we could go ahead and approve this as an action item against general funds, and we, and, and still tie it to the, uh, to the, uh, bond proposal, and I think that's been very well clarified with the proposal from, uh, legal counsel.
Scott?
Stephenson and Sons done any portions of our roofs?
I think they've, they've done probably ninety percent of the, the work, uh, in, um, with our nineteen ninety issue, and all of the roof repair that we've done with, out of our general fund. I believe that Stephenson's has done all of it.
Okay. I'm not a engineer's type person, but I'm looking at the diagram here of how they think the water is going to go, and I'm.
Is it clear?
Pretty, yeah, it looks like it's tapered wider on one side half than it is on the other, and it's flowing in a whole bunch of different directions, and I, I assume these four little things in the bottom are drains.
And there will be, uh, new drains.
New drains.
Part of our problem is these drains are not.
You notice it says not to scale, so.
Not to scale, yeah, well.
That's a technical term.
Um, I, my concern, as it's always has been, is flat roofs, I mean, and I'm looking[1713.91] My concern, as it always has been, is flat roofs and I'm looking at one-eighth of an inch per foot. I guess my question to the Stephenson people as it would be to any of them would be, is there any opportunity, is there any way that they can make that one-eighth of an inch, whatever the steepest grade of it is, to get it off the roof or to the drain, it would certainly be my advice to use it. If one-eighth of an inch is the max, then that's so be it, but that's not much of a fall and if there's any depression, it's been my experience that the insulation on these things are soft. Weight of ice and snow is heavy, which will create depressions up there on the membranes, which means that the water won't flow towards those drains, they'll be caught in the depression. So the steeper that that grade would be, the more acceptable that I would find it. And this is strictly a layman sitting here looking at it, but I've been up on the roofs, I've seen them rip the stuff off, I've seen the pools of water in the various spots and I just wish we had roofs like Wilkes-Barre all over the place is what I wish, but I know my wish is a pie in the sky. We're never going to see in our lifetimes on this board, roof repairs at Wilkes-Barre, but we're going to see them, I mean, in some of your lifetimes on the board, you'll probably see this one again. And I would only ask that whoever, in the approval of this, whoever, whichever company gets it, we zero in on the paper of the roof and try and maximize it if we could.
Well, I'm afraid I'll give you a layman response and that is, I know Mike Joseph and Stephenson's and the Christman Company have worked on this and they think it's an excellent system. I think it's about the, I assume that it's the same standards that we've set forth in our, in our other projects, but let me take that back and share that concern with them and double check on that.
One inch per eight feet is not a big fault.
Right.
I mean, that's, naked eyes are going to look at that as being pretty level. And I just, my concern, as they always are, is that I think we ought to make those grades as much as we possibly can within reason to get the water off of the roof before it freezes so it doesn't pool and it doesn't get any heavier than it has to.
The drains and of course, the slopage to the drains are what's important to make sure that those drains are operating well and that's been the problem with the systems before where the drains were poorly designed.
Well, I was up there and the drains were up in the air and the pools of water were around the drains, but since the drains were up in the air, it couldn't get into the drain.
But you need to clarify, these are projects that were done ten, fifteen years ago.
Yes, oh yes, these are old ones, these are old ones, these are what created the problem.
Back when you first came onto the board.
Oh, it's been a while, yeah, but I mean, just for the sake of future boards, if we can just move on.
Make sure that they're engineered right and Stephenson's got an excellent reputation. We've been very satisfied with the roof projects that we've done thus far. Remember, this is that section of the roof too that has that big layer of stone and all of that's going to be ripped off and completely redone.
Jeff?
The, this is above the media center now and we've got, it's part of our plan, some other work that's going to be going on in the media center. That's totally unrelated, in other words, there's no structural issues having to do with, you know, they just did the roof, but they're going to have to go pull holes and change.
I raised that question as well. No, there's no conflict in doing this project ahead of time.
Charlie?
This is another technical question, Bob. Is the sixty-mil rubber membrane that they're going to put on there, is that the same system that we've put elsewhere?
Yes, same standard.
Same, the sixty mils is the same?
Yeah. Which is a high quality for the industry, that's a good one.
Questions, comments? Note that this is an action item?
Along with that action item, is the resolution a part of that then?
Yes, we'll have to refer to this new resolution.
Okay, because I don't think it's listed in this. We're just going to add it to number two then?
Yes, we'll just make this resolution as a part of attachment.
We'll pull number two and make that approved.
All right. Just want to make sure.
Thank you, Kathy. Anything else? Speaking of action items, we are at that point in the agenda. Any people wish to pull? We will already be pulling number two and we will also be pulling number eleven.
And we have a twelve.
Number six.
Six, yes, of course. Scott, three.
Do we have a number twelve additional?
We do.
Applied Services tentative agreement?
No, twelve.
Okay, I'll just find it. Does anybody have a copy I can use?
Someone may not have gotten a copy because I have two.
Here.
Thank you.
Of L. Does anybody need a L?
Okay, so we're not pulling number twelve though, are we?
I'm going to talk about both of them.
Okay, well, all right, then we'll pull eleven and twelve. Okay. All right, having pulled number two, three, six, eleven and twelve, the remainder are number one, approval of the minutes from August the twenty-sixth, number four, section one-twenty-five plan, the approval of that, number five, the winter tax certification, number six, designation of a...
No, we pulled number six, I'm sorry.
Number seven, the advisory committee representative, I'd like to take just one second to mention a note on that. We do have another, a new representative for the parent advisory committee for the ISD Special Education. It's Lori Olamacher. She is replacing Lori Miller, who is the outgoing representative, so we wish to acknowledge that, that fact. Number eight is a board resolution on pre-education for four-year-old children. I'd like to also make a note of that, that we are, this is a grant that we are receiving, qualifies us for, to receive eighteen thousand dollars to the Comprehensive Compulsory Education Program for Four-Year-Old Children at Wilkes-Barre and thanks to Sharon Jones, we are able to take, participate in that. Number nine, acceptance of a Title VI grant. This grant is a reward from the Department of Education under Title VI, it's for sixteen hundred and thirteen dollars and it's part of Meridian High School and Maria Layman's organization. Acceptance of the nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven Secondary Single Parents and Single Pregnant Women Program Grant. This grant is for forty-two thousand dollars, again, for the Meridian High School and Maria Layman. And this is a grant from the Department of Education for secondary parents and single pregnant women. So, for all three of those grants, thank you for all the people who are applying for them and receiving those grants. If we were to total it up here, I think it comes to over sixty thousand dollars. Those are the items that we will be voting for as a group. Do I have a motion?
Support.
Move and support? I have no idea Cheryl.
Me neither.
All those in favor?
Bev and Jeff.
Bev and Jeff. All of those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Number two, the high school library roof replacement. We will be modifying the resolution on that to include the wording from our attorney on the use of the money, so, which allows us to go ahead and work on that prior to the election. The understanding is, is that with the resolution, if the money is not available from the bond in a week, that we would in course, be taking this out of our general fund to cover it. I don't think there's any problem with that, just to make sure everybody understands what we're voting on. Do I have a motion on that?
Move.
Support. Move and support, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Scott, number three.
Financial consultants, I see the last three years, we had a fixed price with our financial consultants. I have no problem with an increase in the price. I guess I'm curious however, from Dave maybe, or whoever, I get the impression from Bruce that the audits have gotten easier, yet the price is getting more expensive and it goes at an increase of an escalator of three hundred dollars a year, whereas the previous three-year cycle, it didn't increase at all. Is there something Dave would like to explain to us on that?
I think the proposal you have is not for the auditing services, it's for the financial consultant for the bond issue?
It's for Ron Erickson, Scott. Erickson and Associates.
It's a different, a different one.
Auditor's contract.
That, the auditors might appear in the future.
So we're not voting, I'm looking at the wrong one here, the financial consultant, is the Erickson thing, not the letter from you to the other?
That's correct.
What item is that? Agenda. This is not an action item.
No.
No, it's not.
We don't have a vote on that.
No.
Financial Facilities Committee.
I think that was just an item of information that we're going to place that on our next agenda.
Strike my question, I was reading this as being the, okay. Having said that, do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion on number three? Move? Support?
Just for clarification, that was actually an agenda item for the committee, the financial committee.
All right, I see what you're...
So it was a part of the agenda.
I looked at it on here and thought that was...
But you can ask your question.
Two weeks from now, right?
We have a motion to move and support, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Item number six, the delegate to the, delegates for the MASP Fall Conference, October the twenty-fourth in Dearborn. Do we have a nominee? Do we have a volunteer?
You have to be there Thursday in order to be a delegate, so...
Yes.
Thursday night I believe is when we start the voting, or do the voting. I won't be there.
I'm going till Friday. I'm not attending. I have no... I'm not going on Thursday.
I'm planning on going, but I'm not positive on going on Thursday yet because I haven't got it on the schedule yet.
That's my situation, I'm planning on attending, but no, no.
When do they need to know?
I don't know. When do they need to know? Does anybody know?
This month yet.
Can we do it at the end of the, at our second meeting? Should we do something?
Yeah, can we delay on this until?
Let's do it.
Yeah, September twenty-sixth, no later than twenty-sixth.
We still have time then.
So I would move that we table this for the next agenda.
Okay.
So move a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will table that issue for the next meeting. Okay, number eleven and twelve, Jean.
Well, I'm happy to say that we have agreements, tentative agreements, that have been approved by the constituents and now are ready for us to seek your approval with paraprofessionals and applied services contracts. You have attachments of just the changes and let me just highlight a couple of them. They are within the financial parameters of what we outlined with you when we asked you to approve the teachers' contracts. It looks a little different because their contracts are a little different, but it is within those financial parameters. Both of these are three-year agreements, our teachers is a two-year agreement. The first year is two and a half percent, the second year is a two and a quarter percent and the third year is a two percent with the agree, with language that if the teachers do get more, that we will do a need-to with them so that they will get equal to the teachers. But we were very pleased to get a three-year, get some three-year agreements under our belt and we're hopeful that this is the beginning for that. We also got a nine percent cap on health insurance, which was something that we wanted very much to get and we had gotten with the teachers also. There are not big other items with these. We had very short negotiation sessions, very positive ones. I think the applied services lasted a day and a half and the paraprofessionals lasted two days and we were done and they were very, very friendly. But let me just highlight a couple of things besides the financial, which really was the meat of the contract negotiations. The applied services, as you know, there is a prohibition now on subcontracting and we did have a subcontracting clause in our old contract and so we have eliminated that, but we have, we have agreed that if we end up omitting a whole department, for instance, if we, if we went to no bus service or no cooks, then we would, we would provide a line item of five thousand dollars for some job counseling for those folks in that department. And we thought that was a positive statement on our behalf to be concerned about workers if, if something that, like that would happen and we don't have any plans, let me make it real clear, we don't at this point foresee that happening. Moving on to the paraprofessional contracts, this was our first chance to revisit that contract after the initial agreement that we made last three years ago and there were some quirks in that. We did the best job we could, but we were starting from scratch three years ago and there were some things we purposely wanted to change. And the biggest one was we had five different classifications in that old contract, but we had several employees who were working in two or three classifications and they were on two or three different pay scales within a day and it had become quite a nightmare for us. And so we restructured from five classifications to three. That did cost us a little bit of money, but it was, it was important to us to do that and we really feel in terms of time saved with our secretaries and payroll, it was money well spent. So that was a big thing for us. We also omitted, we had a requirement that, that people, that we, right now, we only get, we give holiday pay for six holidays if you are a twenty-hour employee or more in that unit. And we had a requirement that you, for some holidays be three, have worked three years and some other holidays have worked five years. That was kind of unwieldy to keep track of all of that and so we just, we did say, if you're a twenty-hour employee, you will get these six holidays. That's consistent with other contracts within our organization. So, we're asking that you please approve them. I think it's really important and it's important for you to know that they were friendly, they were rigorous, but very pleasant also and we have a good working relationship with our units, it makes a big difference. Kevin Karpinski, the MEA Uniserve Director, said to me, of course, he gets to work with lots of school districts and he said it's a, he really complimented Hazlet for the professionalism and the way employees are treated and it's not that bargaining is easy, but we have a lot of respect for, mutual respect for each other and it's real clear to him, having seen lots of other school districts. So, to your credit and to both teams, both sets of teams, we're recommending that we approve these as have they.
Questions?
David, Mr. Martel's taking a good look at these, I assume?
He sat in on the negotiations.
Part of your team. He blessed us with, I assume, there's no problem there, we can afford these?
Indicating he's not into blessing.
So move.
Will we get updated master agreement books?
Yes, you will.
Okay.
But I wanted you to see these because when you get the whole agreement, sometimes it's hard to find out what's new.
No, I appreciate seeing the change. I appreciate that.
The MEA actually, we give them a disc with all of this and they, they have, they do make the final copy and then we share the cost of that. With their situation right now, it will be a little while.
Is that where our HEA book came from?
Yes.
The agreement book we got in our package this week came from that system?
They, they typed that and then they give us a copy, we proof it and send any changes and we've done that for years, they have actually done it.
I was wondering who did that.
Right.
It was nice to have.
We talked about changing this year, but it's on a software package that they have and we don't have and it was easier to have them continue then for us to convert.
It's worth the delay.
It's worth the delay.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, just aside, there's two agreements then that are pending. What do we have, five units that we work around?
We do.
As you know, we're taking care of the teachers, we've taken care of paraprofessionals, the support staff. That leaves us with secretaries, who we actually have a tentative agreement with, they have not ratified yet because of the MEA situation, so hopefully we'll get ratification on their side soon and we'll bring that to you maybe as early as our next meeting. Adult education is still, we've not reached a settlement with them. I think we were scheduled to negotiate Wednesday of this week and that's still tentative now with the MEA situation, so. I'd also like to salute Jean and Gunnar and Dave Martel, Maria Layman and others that have represented us on the negotiating teams. Even though it's gone quite smoothly and we haven't had to put as much time into it as we have in years past, it still means a lot of work and a lot of time and I think they represent the board and community very well. And as Jean said, I really do salute Bob Ewitt and our other representatives, I think they are looking at both sides and we appreciate that.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So move.
Move and support, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Announcements of future meetings, the next regularly scheduled board meeting is for September the twenty-third at seven-thirty. Please note the six-thirty starting time for dinner with the new teachers. It's an opportunity we have to meet the new teachers that have come into the district and have some pizza with them, so. In addition to that, there's one other very important item to note, one week from today, if we haven't said this enough, there is a millage election in Hazlet. It is extremely important that people take the opportunity to vote, voice your opinion. We hope, we know which way you will go, but nonetheless, please, next Monday at the high school, everyone votes at the high school next Monday. We appreciate your participation. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Move and support.
Move and support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.